Meeting. Michelle, you're muted. Sorry, were you speaking?
I said I was here, but I wasn't. Kara didn't think I was here.
Yeah, you were in the attendees, not the panelists. So you're here. Um, yeah. All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and call our work session to order tonight and turn it over to Ms. Ledesma to orient us to how our conversation is going to go this evening.
Great, thank you. So, Chair-
Am I supposed to have Guadalupe introduce you? I always forget the protocol here.
This evening, we're gonna just go ahead and I'm gonna go, I can introduce Danny or if you want to go directly-
Guadalupe's unmuted, so we'll see what he says.
Oh, sorry.
This is a work session of the board, so Claire Hertz, our deputy, is the executive sponsor of This Strand of Work, and she has a very capable team who you're gonna continue to hear from this evening. So perfectly fine to have Danny kick us off.
All right, thank you, everyone. So my name's Dani Ledesma. I'm our advisor on racial equity and social justice, Chair Lowry, Board of Directors. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to share with you an update on the progress of the Southeast enrollment and program balancing process. Before you hear from my colleagues, I'd like to share with you a little bit about, a little context, and a little bit about the values and approach that has been guiding staff through this process. So as you are aware, we are in the midst of really unprecedented times. There's a global pandemic, there's a resulting economic fallout. We're in the midst of comprehensive distance learning reckoning. And all of this is happening while staff, principals, parents, and students are really continuing to engage with us as we strive to reach the ideals that are laid out in our community's vision. And we are reminded every day, I think, about how special and unique our Portland community is. Because despite all of the uncertainty, despite all of the resulting challenges of the times, we have had a really solid contingent of members in the guiding coalition who have rolled up their sleeves and committed to working with us to try to reach our goals. And so as you know, the goals of this process are not simple. In fact, there are layers and layers of complexity that not only point to areas for reflection, for growth and improvement at PPS, but they also should light on the interconnectedness between education, gentrification and displacement, transportation issues, locational issues, neighborhood connectivity, and racial equity and social justice. So, um, given this complexity, we find certainty in our commitment to our process goals while also holding really a lot of importance to the core values of racial equity and social justice and partnership and collaboration from our vision, which is that second slide. And so, you know, one of the things I want to just point out to as we think about how we've endeavored on this is that we've really tried to live into the definition of inclusion and our beliefs. And I want to read to you one of the beliefs from our racial equity and social justice lens, which we've tried to apply throughout this process. And the belief is, we believe the district must work in aligned and coherent ways and in close partnerships with families and communities. We believe that communities, parents, teachers, and community-based organizations have unique and important solutions to improving outcomes for our students and educational systems. Our work will only be successful if we are able to truly partner with a community to engage with respect, to authentically listen, and have the courage to share decision-making, control, and resources. It's a pretty tall order. And so what I think that you're gonna hear from tonight is about our engagement efforts to date, as well as how we are attempting to demonstrate our willingness to listen and act upon what we learn from the engagement that we're engaged, that we're providing effort for. Our approach to this work also asks us to consider ways in which we create the conditions in our process to really optimize collaboration, the ability to not only plan for, but to truly understand multiple perspectives, to live into targeted universalism, while also recognizing our interdependence. So you will hear a lot tonight, and you already have heard, a lot about equity and the multiple perspectives of what that may mean to people. And I would encourage us to lean into some of the work that we've been doing through our professional development work with the Center for Equity Inclusion, along with what some of our coalition members have asked us to do. And that's the work of examining our collective culture, and not just our PPS culture, but our Portland culture. And to really examine that culture and work to disrupt where tenants of white supremacy may show up in our process. So we've had robust discussions about this, and what comes to the forefront for me are three tenants that I think are important. The first is either-or thinking. I think that, as you all know, as decision-makers, as folks who are deliberating all the time, we really have to resist the urge of either-or thinking, of thinking of things in dualities, as a right way and a wrong way, and assigning whole communities to one or the other. Instead, we really are challenged to create meaningful space for dialogue and consideration that there are multiple experiences and multiple perspectives. And holding on to that is very difficult, particularly in a process as complex as this. Another tenant that I think about is this sense of urgency. And that's something where we get trapped all the time. I think we just, we just experienced a little bit of that, right? This sense of urgency can often make it difficult to take time to be inclusive, to encourage thoughtful decision-making, to think long-term, and to consider consequences. So instead of leaning into that sense of urgency, we're really trying to make adjustments to our plans, to the process, and timelines to try to build in, to bake in more space for thoughtful participation and deliberation in order to morally, in order to more fully contend with a complex and interdependent set of decisions that we know have to be made. Another tenant that I want to think about and encourage us to think about together is this fear of open conflict. You will hear, and you have heard, many opposing opinions. And many of our folks, our parents, staff, principals, are raising very important considerations. And while at some point, we do want to get to a recommendation that has support, that is widespread, in the process to get there, we don't want to shy away from these difficult conversations. We don't want there to be a lack of dialogue or a lack of conflict, but rather, we want to ensure that we tackle these challenges in agreement. And we've talked a little bit about living into agreements. And so we've adopted a set of working agreements about the way in which we want to work together. And I want to just also say that we acknowledge that we are a work in progress and committed to share learning. We have a great opportunity to understand so many different experiences and narratives from our work, doing multiple levels of engagement. And now, really, is our opportunity to take this in, to synthesize and to bolster our process and strengthen our relationships as we move into making recommendations. So I hope tonight that you'll hear, you'll see this demonstration of us really trying to embody a learning organization, taking in all of the different perspectives, really trying to achieve a space where we're creating the conditions for racial equity and social justice, doing this in partnership and collaboration with our parents, with our principals, with students, and so many community members. So I'm gonna introduce our Director of Community Engagement, Shanice Clark, who's going to detail a little bit more about our engagement efforts today.
Thank you, Dani, and good evening, Board Directors and Superintendent. I know as we've been continuing this work with our Southeast Guiding Coalition, we have been able to really listen to perspectives and make continuous improvement in our engagement process. And as Dani mentioned, as a learning organization, I think we've been employing multiple means and efforts to be able to reach folks where they are. And so through social media or websites, calling folks, and making space virtually through surveys, we've been able to hear initial perspectives from our community. But really, through our open house, focus groups, student and teacher outreach, we have been able to sit with perspectives, views, and tensions, and wanna make space for what it looks like to adapt our process in ways that are meaningful for our goals and the community in which they will impact. And so on the next slide, we'll have a little bit of information on our open house. So on Thursday, we had an opportunity, not on Thanksgiving, but the week before that, had an opportunity to have an open house where over 800 members of our community participated in a live stream and concurrently had language rooms. And so this is a little picture of the amount of people who participated. But I'll also say, through other outreach taking place in the same week, there's been a substantial number of folks that we've been able to listen to and hear from, and wanna continue to have those perspectives at the forefront of some of our discussion tonight. On the next slide, there's just some demographics of the folks who participated in the open house survey and our student survey, and a picture of the demographics. But I'll also mention Russian, Somali, Spanish, Mandarin, and Cantonese, and Vietnamese groups. In addition to what took place at the open house, were also happening throughout the week. And so we have some rich feedback and information that has allowed us to identify some potential risks and opportunities that Claire will be talking a little bit more about on the next slide.
Thank you, Shanice and Dani. Really appreciate the sharing of the process to date. And having spent the past week reading through thousands of comments and hearing individual experiences through their testimony in rooms and in their comments that they've submitted in surveys, and it has a profound impact on the leadership of the enrollment and program balancing process. So it is, we have shared a report that's posted online for this board work session. And it is a 20-page report, and it is broken down by all the sessions that we've had. And we had in languages that have been translated and in various ethnicity and race responses. This is something our guiding coalition has been asking for, for more feedback and more understanding from our community. And so we're proud to share the comments. Some of them, as I personally have read through them, I can, the empathy for what is, this is, how this is impacting our families is certainly in the forefront of my mind. Having said that, they have, the comments are having an impact on how we want to improve our practice and our process, and making sure that we're hearing those voices and bringing those voices forward. Our guiding coalition have, had, had every individual comment shared with them, as well as the 20-page summary report to review and that we will be debriefing with them on Thursday. Having said that, one of the things that we need to prepare for is we really wanna, right now, we have a very large amount of information that people are considering in a proposal, in a discussion proposal. And what's in that proposal is really in both Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the work. So at our next meeting, we're going to take the feedback into consideration, and we're also gonna simplify into the one small area and focus on Kellogg Middle School. So we'll be working to establish the elementary K-5 schools that will be the feeder pattern for the Kellogg 6th or 8th Middle School. So that's gonna become our primary focus. It's okay for ideas to bubble up that might be decided in Phase 2, but we're gonna put them in a parking lot off to the side. Make sure we capture every last bit of thinking, but we're gonna focus on resolving the small area in the next few meetings. Then we will bring that to the board in January. And really, the, some of the comments from the community about this is too much change, this is too much all at once, really trying to listen to that and trying to get to a smaller, where we know we're opening a school, the community is excited about attending that school for their middle schoolers. And so how do we make sure that that happens? So that's our primary focus. Then, as we go into the second item here, where we are thinking about a second middle school, and all of these change, this second phase changes are happening in fall of '22, so a year later. So it gives us more time. We're hearing people need more time to have a conversation and understand what's the best way, have time to do the work, not to be in a rush. So we're looking at then the Harrison Park feeder pattern, DLI placements. If we decide to move creative science, that we establish at the same time, a facility for creative science. We make sure that we have special education, regional program placement, and that we have room for preschool in our K-5 schools, so that they become PK-5 schools. So just helping the community, we're doing a separation of Phase 1 at this point and focusing on that one outcome we need for fall of '21, and then working the rest of it together, because they are so intertwined and have the need to be looking at how, when you make one change, it impacts all the other pieces of the area of the region. So with that, that's what we wanted, we've, are thinking from our, as staff, as we bring forward the process and continue to refine and iterate with our Southeast Guiding Coalition. Really, being, staff being facilitators for the parents and principals that are refining the, the outcomes for, that are meeting the board charge that was established last spring. So with that, I wanna turn it back to Dani Ledesma and go to the next slide.
I think we just wanted to, before we turn it back over to Chair Lowry and the board for your discussion, just kind of point out that, like, you know, we're, we think that we're at this pivotal point where we can sort of continue to build trust and sort of build support for the work that we're doing over time. We think that we can continue to demonstrate responsiveness and adaptation to, to what we're hearing from our, from our Southeast Guiding Coalition, as well as other parents. And, you know, we really are committed to continuing to, to, like Claire said, really regroup and redesign the process so that we're building support that is responsive to the challenges as we're, as we're, as we, as we hear from parents about that. So I think we, we really want to make sure that both the board and the public sort, you know, hear our commitment to that, to continuous learning and inclusion, and that we really are committed to sort of like rolling up our sleeves and doing the work to support the conditions for really continued robust community dialogue to be able to get to these, to get to a recommendation that, that you all can get behind. So I'll turn that back over to Chair Lowry now.
All right, and you all were sent out the questions that, the, that were being asked. Is there a slide for the questions, Dani, or no? So they're visually in front of people.
They're not, but we can make one real quick.
Okay, I can also, I don't know if this is legal, Liz can yell at me, but we don't have a chat. I was gonna just pop them in the chat. But anyway, because some of us are more visual, right? We're trying to accommodate all learning styles. So our two questions tonight are, what suggestions do you have for improving the process? So this is that, as we hear feedback regarding the impact of our current process, staff will regroup to redesign the process to build support for programs and enrollment challenges. What suggestions do you have for improving the process? And we'll go through alphabetically by last name and answer that. And then the second is, are you open to recommendations from the guiding coalition that allows changes over time in support of school transitions? And if you end up answering both of those together, it's not a big deal. But those are the questions. So we'll go ahead and begin through our list, which I, of course, don't have up in front of me. Excuse me, Chair Lowry, did you say that they were gonna be posted? I asked staff, there we go. Thank you. There are the questions. Yeah, and they were emailed out earlier this afternoon, but I know that not everyone's had a chance to look at them. So Director Bailey, are you ready to provide a response to question one or to question one and two? Director Bailey, you're muted.
How's that? I'll ask a couple of questions to get things going and then let it go around. I could ask a lot, but, so one question is-
I just want to clarify, our, my understanding of, just to check back in with staff, was that we're kind of focusing on these questions, the two questions staff presented, which, what suggestions do you have for improving the process?
Yes, and that's what, that's what I'm focused on.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Okay. So with equity being a central value, how, how can you bring a sharper focus to issues of equity that come up in the guiding coalition discussions? I'm thinking, for example, in particular, the word segregation has come up a number of times. Has there been a discussion to unpack that word? And what's that mean? Because I've seen it used actually from a number of different angles. So I guess my, my suggestion would be more, more the, getting more specific on equity, equity concerns and equity issues, and guiding coalition members through a discussion that unpacks that more, if that makes sense. A second question I have, or in terms of the process, while-
I think that makes a lot of sense, Director Bailey. Did you have any?
I can stop, I'll stop at one, and then we can go around. How's that?
I think you're fine, Director Bailey. I think we can take some more substantive time here. I just stopped hearing you, so I jumped in, but I think it's because my internet is wonky tonight.
Yeah, well, we all are. A second, it's not, again, it's a question more than a suggestion. I appreciate the attempt to have more time to deal with some of the substantive issues that have come up. At the same time, is it possible to make a decision on Kellogg Feeders without essentially deciding some other things down the line? For example, if we decide, if the committee comes up with a recommendation for the Feeders for Kellogg, what implication, implications does that have for the location of, say, Spanish immersion programs? If Kellogg is designated as a Spanish immersion, having a Spanish immersion program, does that mean that the schools not feeding Kellogg would not have a Spanish immersion program, or not? So I think it's really important, and I, and I think coalition members are pretty hip to this, too, that really understanding the implications of, if there's a recommendation for a feeding, a feeder pattern, what, what the implications are for other schools not in the feeder pattern as well. So I'll stop there and let people go around, and if there's time to come back around, great.
We can be here all night. All right, Director Brim Edwards, did you have, did you want to respond to that? What suggestions do you have for improving the process question?
Yes, I'm muted. So I have a number of suggestions, but I want to start by just thanking staff and the community for starting the process and the continued focus on the middle grades inequity, and keeping that at the core, because Kellogg and the Second Middle School are a big unlock for students in outer Southeast who haven't had an equitable middle grade. So I would say, like, in terms of process, like, keep, don't lose that focus. A couple things I would suggest is that, to keep in mind, as, there's a lot of new people in this discussion, but the Southeast cluster has had so many focus programs, so many immersion programs. There's, you know, it had the largest number of under-enrolled K-8s that, to keep in mind the stability and the long-term health of those sets of schools. And there's been a lot of experimenting over the last two decades in that area, and just be cognizant of that when proposing changes. I think there's been a lot of comments on the pandemic making it, and from the community, it's hard to engage, and I think staff has done a great job of trying to work within the parameters that we have with the pandemic, but that many of the places where parents informally have discussions about things that are happening in their school communities are not available to us because of social, to parents because of social distancing. So just keep that in mind, that while, I don't think necessarily people are objecting to the pace because they're objecting to the suggestions, but a lot of the social networking and conversations that happen informally aren't happening because of the pandemic. The phase, I would say, a process piece is that the Phase 1, whatever happens in Phase 1, that that shouldn't predetermine Phase 2 impacts, or they, it should be very transparent, and that we should make sure that we all know if there's a Phase, a Phase 2 impact by making a decision in Phase 1. And then the last thing I would suggest is, well, two things. One, that more option, that more than one option be brought to the community meetings in Phase 2. I think what I heard from a lot of people is that it was like, here it is, like, up or down. And that didn't actually, we could have had actually more community ideas and engagement if we had, had more than one option. And then the last is, I think, and staff has acknowledged this and is making changes, but there's some missing representation as part of the guiding coalition. And just to make sure that going forward, we try and make sure that voices that aren't present at the table are included, whether it's, you know, Vietnamese representatives, representatives of Glencoe, or the various communities that aren't currently at the table, that we make sure that as we move forward, they're included. I think very promising start, and appreciate all the work that staff's done to engage the community. to engage the community in pretty challenging circumstances.
Director DePass?
Yes, um I just want to appreciate first everyone that's uh on the guiding coalition and the families that are going through these conversations and the staff work that's gone into, you know, presenting these these options. Um I like that that we're um proposing to do a phase one and a phase two. I'd like to um encourage us to uh take a broader look at the stakeholders that are impacted, particularly those from Glencoe. I think, I think just personally, what's the most important in this to me is that people feel like they've been heard. We're not going to make everybody happy with the process or with the outcomes, um but I feel like it's really important for the public to be heard and for families to be heard. Um so that to the extent that we can broaden the the people that we're listening to, the impacted stakeholders that haven't been at the table and the communities that haven't been at the table, um I think that would be great. Um in terms of phase one and phase two, um I'd like to just be cognizant that whatever we do, it's going to be hard to do this entire process in a vacuum in two distinct phases. So I'd like to us to be very cognizant about how we bridge those two phases of the work, so they're an integrated outcome. And I also agree that the choice of options, um you know, we're we live in America and we're used to having choices, and I think that um from a public, just public meeting perspective and and public entity perspective, I I always like to come to the um public with a couple of options, um because that's where the most um input can help drive, you know, what we ultimately end with, end up with. So I'd like to also see more than one option for people to weigh in on. And and I think that's it for now.
Director Konstant?
Thank you, thank you, everybody. Thanks to our our public engagement team for, I think, really doing a great job in um doing the focus groups in our supported languages. There are some ways where where things are actually easier um in virtually, but um it's it's a hard time to really try to take the pulse of the community. But um one of the things that I think is important is for us to reexamine some of our underlying principles, because these scenarios were generated based on board conversations that we had and some underlying principles that were laid out. For example, you know, we had a a general sentiment that colocation is bad, or I forget what we called them, but you know, they were some of our guiding principles that were laid out, that colocation is bad, and so we need to try to avoid colocation of programs. And, you know, when you, we all know that with any kind of enrollment balancing, when you pull a thread here, it causes a snag over there. And so maybe we need to be a little more nuanced about some of those um foundational beliefs that have led us to the options that are, have been on the table so far. For example, you know, uh if we have colocation that is balanced within a school, like two and two, um that's a much more workable solution than if we have a single strand of something in a school. So um just that, that's something I'd like to see is a kind of a reexamine of some of those underlying principles and the unintended consequences that they might produce. Another thing that I think is important that was um really um brought to us by the community is that um I do think we fell short on engaging students in this process. And yes, it's kind of a hard time to engage students with everyone virtual, but I'd like to see more effort made for student voice in this decision-making process. Um and then lastly, you know, why why are we doing this? We want to, we obviously, we need to populate Kellogg, and I totally support dividing this into phase one and phase two. But ultimately, we're doing this to to create um greater equity of opportunity, to decrease economic and racial segregation, and all of that in service to ultimately raising student achievement. So I I want us to keep the lens of student achievement, because we all know, you know, a brand-new middle school with a couple more electives than a K eight might have had doesn't, isn't necessarily the the what's really going to make a difference for kids in terms of how they learn. So um just in all our conversations, I I hope that we're um looking at everything as a means toward toward those ends. And I think that's all I got.
All right, my turn next, Lowry. I think my comment about improving, first of all, I'm super thrilled with this new direction. I think it's the right answer, and I really appreciate the responsiveness to to public comment that's causing this change. Um I think the suggestion that would be most helpful for me would be clarity around the board role in all of this. I think um, you know, we have been in a role of listener, but we've also been called in at some points to be role of ambassador. And then I also know there's been some times where the board has sort of intimated that um staff is leading this, and I know that this is actually the board's process that the staff is facilitating. So I think we as a board need to be clear about about our ownership of this and our both support and collaboration with the staff as we go through this work. So I think that for me would be the the suggestion, and I think that would be helpful to the public to really understand that this is a process of the board and that our goals are, you know, um that that equity framing is key. So that would be the the piece I would have. Director?
Was that, did you just call on me? Okay, sorry, I had a little glitch. Can you hear me? Okay, um. So I I might be a little um, a little repetitive, but um. So I think greater clarity in um the the scope of the decisions in the different phases I think will be helpful. I think that's been an issue kind of throughout the process, that it's been a little unclear what decisions are being made, when, and when will they be implemented? So um, so I think that uh better clarity will be helpful. At the same time, I'm I'm a little concerned that um we're going to be, it it means that a lot is going to have to happen in the spring. So there's a um, there's an upside and a downside to um kind of shifting things into phase two. I guess the second thing I would say is um I think uh this process has been incredibly complicated. I mean, it's incredibly complicated e- even on a good day, and it hasn't been a good day for a while now. So I I appreciate um everybody's work on this. I know it's been um really hard, harder than it would otherwise be, because it's all virtual. And having been involved in these things, you know, on this issue for a very long time, being hands-on really helps, and that's not available now. So I, thank you to everybody for kind of powering through all of this. I do think that one thing that would be helpful is to, sort of building on what Amy was saying, kind of bring bring the student experience back into focus. I think, I think the danger in these kinds of processes is that it often can feel like just moving warm bodies around on a map. It can feel very bureaucratic. And I think it's, I think it would be helpful to to try to remind people or or maybe inform people um w- why we're doing this, that we're opening two new middle schools and of necessity, things are going to have to change. It's unavoidable. But at the same time, um we also need to kind of make it real for people, the opportunities that are going to be made available to students that they don't currently have. So the status quo is problematic. With these, with these two new middle schools, there are real opportunities for students. And and I think it, in order to make that real for people, I think it would be helpful if um if the coalition members had the benefit of hearing from people from the academic side of the house about the um academic opportunities that will be made available with changes. And in looking at particular options, like we can do either X or Y, in the absence of some um, you know, information context setting by experts, it's very difficult for parents or students to get beyond the um obvious costs involved. It's it's very difficult for parents to imagine something else if they haven't experienced it. That was certainly the case when I was involved in committees dealing with this sort of thing. So I think if if the uh process could include more consultation with the academic side to talk about what kind of programmatic opportunities um various scenarios would present, I think that would be helpful.
Oh, we'll stop there. All right, um Director Scott?
Thank you, um yeah, it going last uh means I'm mostly going to be repetitive, but um sort of adding my voice to some of the things that people have talked about. I I actually think going back to um Scott's question about whether we can separate the decisions is really going to be key to sort of my answer in terms of how we improve the process. I I really appreciate staff saying that they are going to um add more representation for phase two. And I think the the question though is, is if if these, if the, that works fine as long as you can disconnect these, but to the extent they're interlocked, then we also need to be looking at representation for phase one. And um I think that I I'll be interested to hear from staff about how much we really can separate those decisions and put things in a parking lot versus how much they are contingent. And then the other thing I would say is, in addition to not just the school representation for for phases one and two in terms of of what parts of our community involve, but also someone else mentioned, maybe a couple um board members mentioned students, you know, being more involved, I I think that's really important. And then making sure we're getting BIPOC families um really involved in this process um as well, I think is is going to be really key. You know, the other thing I would say for improvements, or maybe a couple other things, making sure we're really deliberate in our outreach, and I I will commend staff. I I think that that, to to be really frank, I mean, contrary to some of the things that I heard um at the town hall about the lack of outreach, I mean, we know factually there was a ton of outreach, but for whatever reason, that outreach wasn't getting through to people. And and perhaps that's the pandemic, perhaps it's just busy lives. I I'm actually a real believer that most community members don't want to get involved in local government, school board processes unless it impacts them directly. Like they sort of just hope that things just move along and then are a little surprised all of a sudden when something does. And so I think our communication needs to be really clear, very directive to each school that might be impacted, but also very clear about why. I actually got an email from a friend from one of the very early southeast uh coalition meetings, and he just emailed me and and he forwarded the the district email, and he said, why, why should I care about this? What is there for me to care about in this? And I realized reading through it, like, we didn't hit people on that very first sentence with his, this is why this is important and you should read this email. And and I think we just need to be that clear and deliberate in our in our communication so that people recognize really early. And and I appreciate staff extending the timeline on this, I think that's going to help with a better outcome. But we need to really, you know, really be clear with people why it's going to impact them. And then, you know, getting back, I I mentioned making sure we've got BIPOC representatives on the on the on the coalition. But I also want to hear directly from from BIPOC families, and and I'm going to say something that I I I I don't, I hope it's not controversial, but it may be. I I want to hear directly from BIPOC families and not from white people speaking on behalf of BIPOC families. And I don't question um a- as a white person myself who cares deeply about racial equity, I don't question people's commitment to racial equity, but I I also know as a white person who doesn't have that lived experience that I can only go so far with that. And and I will be honest, the majority of the equity conversation right now is 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 coming from from white families in in Portland um that that are being directly impacted. And 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 I I would rather, we we need to figure out a way to be hearing directly from BIPOC families and and not just those families who might be negatively impacted, because there will be some negatively impacted by any changes we make, but those who are going to be positively impacted as well. And that's really hard to do. But as we as we have this conversation and we 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 center racial equity and social justice, it's not going to be, as someone mentioned early on, either or, either this 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 benefits all, you know, um families of color in the district or it benefits none. It it's it's going to be nuanced and in the middle. And and for us as a board and for the community at large, to really be engaging in a deep equity analysis, we're going to need to be hearing from lots and lots of of groups who are impacted very differently. So um I can't tell you exactly the best way to do that. I know I've been doing public outreach for 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 government services for a long time, and it's really, really hard, um but I think we we have to get it right if we're going to end up with with a good proposal in the end.
Student Representative Shu?
Thank you. I'm buoyed by a number of aspects in this process. Perhaps foremost of my concerns, as Directors Konstant and Scott mentioned, regards insufficient student engagement and representation, including on the coalition itself. If I were to offer one suggestion, it would be to urge us to be far more intentional and systematic in our attempts to reach out to our students than we have been thus far. I would also be interested in hearing how, from staff's perspective, was student engagement approached throughout this process and um how we plan to be more thorough in reaching out in the future?
Great, okay, um the second question, are you open to recommendations from the guiding coalition that allows changes over time in support of school transitions? It's a yes or no question, but obviously um we are going to take longer than yes or no to answer it, because there's a lot there. Um and we're going to actually go in reverse alphabetical order, because um just to try to change it up, so people who spoke last can have a chance to speak first. So student representative?
Chair Lowry? Yeah. Before before we go into the round robin, I I'm wondering if like staff could speak to that, because it seems like, well, who's going to say they're close to it? I'm not, and I'm not really quite sure what it's asking.
Right.
So it seems like a, it almost seems like a trick question. Like, who's going to answer no? And like, is it the recommendations, do they allow or do they drive changes over time? So maybe somebody, there could be a little bit more substance?
Yeah, that's a great question, Julia, that's a really, really good uh thing there. Danny, um or Claire or Shanice, um would one of you like to respond to that question from Director Brim Edwards?
I'm just looking before I am the first one to speak, but. Okay, so an example would be um, right now, we have um a policy um in place that allows um for um students to continue through um a school throughout the, from once they end enrollment, they can continue all the way through. There have been times in the past when a resolution from the board had a change that implemented things sooner. And so what we want to be sure of is that we're capturing um what the board's intent is in. For instance, um if there's crowding at at crowding at Franklin, and if we change boundaries um or feeder patterns, but then we allow all those students to stay, that Franklin, it could take years before Franklin's not crowded. So what what we want to make sure is that we're understanding from the board's perspective. For instance, if um we change a a pattern from um for a K five boundary and the if there were a if there were a fifth grade class that we would make a recommendation from the guiding coalition that fifth grade could stay and complete their final year at the same school. That that would be a recommendation we would include in going to the board. We could do that at eighth grade, we could do that at 12th grade. It just, we wanted to kind of get a sense from the board about as we're making recommendations, what are you looking for from us as a guiding coalition? And really it's the guiding coalition members. Staff is trying to help facilitate what kind of recommendations you'll be looking for from the guiding coalition members in their proposal that's coming forward. So looking at what current policy is, having the resolution from the board can actually keep policy as is. Or it could also say, because of the extreme crowding at Franklin, we're going to implement, we'll say 11th and 12th graders could, for the year of the implementation, 11th and 12th graders could stay, but new ninth and 10th graders coming in would not be able to, would not be able, like maybe it's even ninth grader starting at Franklin. So helping us with as we're transitioning these changes, what kind of transitions, recommendations are you looking for in terms of if we're eliminating under enrollment and overcrowding? If we're trying to have an impact, if we use the current policy, it will take decades for the change to happen. So then going through and having all this processing over this, when it, it wouldn't change for a really long time, we need to know what, what the board is thinking about all of that. Lots of examples, probably too many.
Did that help Director Brim Edwards?
It did. Thank you.
Great. So Student Representative Shu, do you want to speak to that first, or should we make Director Scott go first? It's up to you, Nathaniel.
Um, I can go. I'd like to ask one clarifying question, one more. I'm still not really clear on what is meant when we say school transitions specifically.
So changing from one school to another, and so a transition year might be when you're going from fifth to sixth grade or eighth to ninth grade. Those would be transition years?
Right. So the question is, are we open to recommendations from the coalition with regard to changing how those transitions work or when they take place or?
Or, or, or transition could also be when we're implementing a change. So we brought forward a proposal to make a boundary change, and then the board approves that proposal. Are we allowing it to, for every student that is in that school, they, and, and their siblings, they can all continue to go to that school? Or are we saying, is there somewhere in the middle where we need to say the beginning class of ninth graders next year would not attend that school? So there's lots of ways to cushion so that people aren't transitioning in the middle. Like, for instance, we've heard a lot from the community about the IB program at Cleveland, and by moving DLI program for, out of Cleveland into Franklin, then there could be students that would be impacted with not being able to complete the IB program. So thinking about how do we minimize the impact on, on students, but also still balancing that with the other impact of where there's not enough classrooms for the kids that are there in the building. So there's, it's, it's finding the, the, how do we transition that's for the best for all the students involved?
Yeah. All right, that makes sense. Well, in that case, I mean, I would certainly be open to that. I think that makes sense as part of the coalition's role, although I mean, I feel that the current coalition could certainly do to have more student members personally, as I said previously, and I might like to see significantly greater student participation before. Things like that might be considered if at all possible. Yeah, I think that's about it.
Want to go ahead, Chair Lowry? I'll go ahead and jump in. Yeah, so I, I'm definitely open to this. I, I, you know, this, this issue came up, I think over a year ago when we, we had an early work session, sort of setting our values and goals around this. And I think, I think grandfathering in to a certain extent is, is one of the things that makes these changes easier. As, as has been pointed out by staff, it also makes the impact of the change take longer, right, to, to sort of see the, the changes we're making, whether it's an overcrowding issue or something else. But I also think what we're dealing with are long-term demographic moves, right? And, 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 and I don't think we can solve a, a decade or a two-decade-long shift in terms of where people live in the city of Portland. I expect to solve that in a year or two. Obviously, I think there are limits. I don't think a third grader who expects to go to Franklin, whose feeder patterns change to a different high school should still be able to go to Franklin. But I am probably pretty open to, to, to quite a bit of flexibility there. I, I don't see any reason why, you know, someone in Cleveland in the IB program wouldn't be allowed to finish that up. It does get challenging if we move that program out, because then they would no longer be in the DLI program. But I think, you know, giving, giving some choice there as well. And I would be interested in knowing, this logistically gets more challenging, but to what extent can we allow choice so that it's not, you know, you know, when we're, and specifically around this issue, not the larger boundary issue, we're not allowing choice. But specifically around this issue of, you know, what, what class makes the shift? Are we open to allowing sort of hardship exemptions to that? Or people saying, you know, you know, sort of applying and, and, and making the, the the, the hurdles for the lowering, lowering the barrier for people sort of getting those. I mean, and, and I, I grew up in Portland when, when there was much more, you know, you could choose to go to any of the nine high schools. And my sister and I went to different high schools because of the different offerings that existed. I, I know we're not going to go back to that system, but I do think there is some value when you're making this type of a change. It also helps ease the transition when, when people who, who might be really focused on the experience of their own family or their own child. Now we can make the conversation more about why we're doing this and the benefits to the district as a whole. So I, I'm definitely open to that.
All right, Director Moore?
So this is an issue that has been that has bedevilled this district for a very, very long time. And I mean, I, I don't, I don't know.
Did we lose Rita? Rita, we can't hear you.
I'm sure it's brilliant and heartfelt.
Any changes in boundary?
She's back. Rita, we missed you there for about a minute.
Okay, well, it's probably not a terrible thing. You didn't miss much. So this is, this is a longstanding issue and I, I, I am of the opinion, sort of in general, that the current policy that governs the implementation, the, the process of implementing any boundary changes is unworkable for the district. It virtually guarantees that any response to a current population shift will not actually take effect until well after the, well after the fact and when you're probably in the middle of an entirely different population shift. So I have, I have concerns about, I have, how do I put this? If we're going to go through this exercise, we need to do it, we need to implement it in a way that it's actually going to have a positive impact on, on, on the stability of schools. We need to have, if we're responding to over enrollment or under enrollment in a particular school, that's happening right now. And delaying implementation for six, seven, eight, nine years, I, I think sort of undermines the whole purpose of this exercise. So anyway, I guess my answer to the question is, you know, am I open in principle? Yeah, sure, I'm open in principle. But it has to be doable. There you go.
So I, Chair Lowry's next. I really am open to, to very much changing how we look at school transitions. And again, you know, understanding that high school students have committed to DLI or the IB program and, and giving students an opportunity to complete that. But I again agree that with what Director Scott said, that, you know, elementary school students not ending up at the high school that they had thought of, or at the high school that an older sibling went to, are all things that I think are, are hard on families, I understand. And yet I think we need to make some changes for the benefit of the whole district. So I'm definitely very much supportive of changing the way we do school transitions, and especially around the legacy with siblings and around at what grade do students move from a school? I know that back in the Portland history, it used to be if you started at kindergarten at a school, you got to go all the way through the cluster. And now it's just through the building. And I would be open to especially looking at elementary and maybe even middle school at where those change points happen. All right, Director Konstam.
I am fairly aligned with Director Moore's comments. I think one of the reasons that we've ended up with some dramatic imbalances in our district is because it has been hard for boards to make difficult decisions about implementing change, because generally speaking, nobody wants change. So, you know, the other, the other piece of that to me is that we're, we have been working really hard as a district to equalize our programs in our schools. So what we really want is for all of our schools to be excellent. So that the, the difference between the school you may attend, other than sentimentality, is, is not that great. And so when we look at high school and, you know, the difference between attending a brand-new Franklin High School or a brand-new Madison High School, I think it's, it's a different conversation than when we had much greater inequity of offerings and programming and all that. So yes, I'm open to hearing the community's thoughts more, continuing to hear the community's thoughts about implementing changes, but as Rita said, we, we need to, to make it happen. And we need to do it in a way that actually serves our end goals in a reasonable time period. And then just within that, we need to kind of hold, hold harmless programming. What's the word I'm looking for? Just consistent programming and patterns of matriculation. But, but other than that, kids are pretty resilient and flexible. And so I think this district can withstand some, some tweaks here and there.
Director DePauw?
I'm also in alignment with Director Moore and Director Konstam in that, well, first of all, we're not grading our kids and our families on resilience. But that's actually a really good muscle to build. It's really good resilience is really important. Especially when we talk about climate change and just being adaptable to new situations. So I feel like I'd, I'd rather see a, not a, not a rushed process, but not a long drawn-out process. I'd rather see a shorter process, no matter what. Not every single stakeholder is going to be thrilled. And I think we should just, you know, Dani Ledesma started out this conversation saying that we needed to not be afraid of open conflict and to be prepared to have difficult conversations. And this is one of those times. So I'm of course completely open to recommendations from the guiding coalition, as, you know, Director Brim Edwards said, who would say no to that? Understanding that they're the experts in the community and they're the, kind of the school community experts. And we're the, we're the board. And so I, I'm in favor of moving the process along. Absolutely listening to the recommendations from the guiding coalition and, and, and taking the band, bandage, bandage off quicker rather than drawing it out for a long period of time.
All right, Director Brim Edwards?
Thanks. So I would say that I'm open to considering the recommendations. It will, whether my thoughts about the recommendations though will be predicated on addressing some of the representation issues that we raised earlier about the guiding coalition. And also the data that's used to back up the recommendations. I'm going to, one of the things I'll be considering is like what the, the policy, my recommendation would be in relation to siblings. As a parent of three, I know that, and if, if you're a working parent or a single parent, the challenges of having your students divided or going in different places, you know, create, create some challenges. So I'll want to take that into consideration. So Director DePauw's the ripping the Band-Aid off. And I was thinking about that earlier because there are often people who have advocated over the years of like, we just need to rip the Band-Aid off and just make it happen. And, you know, I'd look back at the process, just two and a half years ago, we used in terms of opening the two middle schools, Roseway Heights and Tubman. And we definitely didn't rip the Band-Aid off. In most cases, there was in some cases, a pretty extended legacy provision that was provided to, to students. And that left Grant overcrowded. And so I would ask that the board, with the recommendations that we ripped the Band-Aid off for Southeast, that the board in its role as looking across the district, that we treat students equally. And that means if there's, if we have a policy that is, was good for, for the Northeast cluster, that it applied to the Southeast or vice versa. If we're going to take a new position in Southeast, then we should have that same approach in other areas where there's enrollment balancing. Otherwise, it'll seem like, hey, there's just a policy for the, for the Southeast. The last thing I would say is, one of the things the audit, one of the things the Audit Committee is going to consider tomorrow is an audit that the, the Director Bailey recommended, which was around hardship transfers. And we currently have about twenty-five hundred hardship transfers, which, which is a lot. And it's not clear what that criteria is and what impact that's having. And so I'd want to, I would want to know how all those transfers impact, you know, if we're going to be moving boundaries and ripping the Band-Aid off on some legacies. At the same time, there's twenty-five hundred transfers, hardship transfers around the district that may be impacting, you know, schools in terms of over enrollment or under enrollment. I would want us to be thinking about that as well, because we can do a lot of good work or follow the recommendations and then have it not make any difference because of a separate policy we have. So those are the things that I would keep in mind when I was considering their recommendations.
Director Bailey?
So I would say, yes, of course, I would be open to hearing the recommendations of the guiding coalition. And my thinking is that the changes that the coalition is going to be proposing to us are going to be of such magnitude that we will really have to make some wholesale changes sooner immediately rather than later. But again, hearing directly from But again, hearing directly from folks in the schools involved, parents and students in the schools involved should be part of our decision-making process.
All right, Deputy Hertz, what else do you have for us tonight?
Well, I've been frantically taking notes because I want to make sure that I'm sharing with the guiding coalition their words of wisdom and advice tonight. So at this point, that is the end of our questions that we had for this team. And I hope that, while I know we just got the summary report to you yesterday, it was as soon as we could complete it with all the holiday weekend. So just appreciate the time for you to consider all of that community input, both the detailed version and the summary, and really encourage you to take a good look. We've been very careful to make sure that we have representation from our six languages, as well as all the BIPOC communities in the region. And so we've been very careful to disaggregate the data by race so that you have the opportunity to take a look at what the community is telling us. So we look forward to the conversation with the guiding coalition. And Director Bailey will be joining us on Thursday. And Director Bailey, I'll be sure to share my notes after I clean up a few typos. And then, so that you can have some, share some of what the board's thinking is with the guiding coalition.
I just want to share my appreciation again for staff working on a really complex process, for our community outreach team for doing a lot of work. Thank you.
Andrew?
Yeah, thanks. Claire, can you remind me, and maybe the community as well, what's our timeline? So I see that the staff recommendation is to separate out, focus on the Kellogg feeder patterns. What's our timeline for making that final decision as a board?
So we have three meetings in December and hope on December 17th that will finalize our recommendation for the K-5 elementary schools that will encompass the feeder pattern for Kellogg. Once we finish that in December, we bring it to the first board meeting in January for a conversation and discussion with the board. And then we ask for your feedback. Is there anything in the recommendation that you just can't live with that we need to modify? And depending on the feedback we get from you and how large it is, we'll either come back in the second meeting in January or the first meeting in February at the latest for approval, having modified the proposal to meet your expectations of the final proposal.
Great, thank you. And so from a public perspective, in terms of their ability to comment on the process, obviously watching the Southeast, you know, coalition meetings, is there public comment at those meetings?
So we have, we have multiple ways for community input on our enrollment program balancing website. We have in the six languages, an opportunity for people to submit feedback directly to the guiding coalition. We also receive many emails. And we are compiling themes, especially, we do some analysis. So we give them all the letters and the things that we receive from PTAs, parents, et cetera. But we also take the time to capture and combine it by theme to help people see if, you know, it's a minimal analysis, at least, of trying to help them digest all the communication that's coming into the guiding coalition.
Great. So feedback through the website, obviously emails, you know, to the district. And then they'll have an opportunity in January when the board is discussing this to also testify at the board here. Thank you.
Anything else from board members on this process tonight? Any other things you need to say to be complete, Director Brim Edwards?
I was just going to say, you know, the answer to the first question, one of the things I should have added is I think there's going to be a natural transition or bleeding over into Northeast. I think it's pretty hard to, I almost think this is going to be a continuum to do the work that you bridge from one to the next. But I, because I think it's going to be really difficult to say, this is all confined within Southeast. So being able to see the longer-term trajectory of how this travels and the pieces that will be brought in, I think would be really helpful. So it's not just, hey, we're going to solve all these problems in this quadrant. And it's, it's not going to be impacted by these other schools in the future is things that will put us in a silo we don't need to be in. So I'd be interested in this longer-term, sort of like what it looks like or where the next piece is and how we bridge or where the overlap is. And so I want to make sure, because I noticed the staff feedback of, here's what we've learned and here's how we're adjusting, still has it just in Southeast in Phase Two. And I think that's pretty hard to do, just from my perspective.
Other closing comments or thoughts?
Chair Lowry, I would just invite anybody who's watching this evening or for us to remind folks that their feedback and input has been really important to date and will continue to be. And we invite them to review the report. They can notice, you know, how their suggestions and input has been considered or tallied or disaggregated. And I think hopefully the board found that insightful. I know the staff has, and, you know, this is an iterative process. So I think that's why you're hearing from staff what you're hearing.
And again, I think an example of our culture of continuous improvement, learning and working to always be better evidenced in this process tonight. Anything else?
Just thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. I know that some of you, like me, were very frustrated that we didn't have more time tonight to dig into some of the budget pieces around the goals and those scenarios, and that we still have a lot more work to do there. Tomorrow, we have agenda setting. So Director Bailey and I will be talking with staff about how we get some feedback about those scenarios, that last question we didn't get to tonight, and also get some more work in before our next meeting when we revisit those goals again. So thank you for your willingness to switch to this meeting, to honor those of the community who were wanting to watch it this part of the meeting. And I know that that's a huge, meaty topic that we need more time on and we'll work with staff to make sure we get that. Tomorrow is agenda setting at 11:00 a.m., so please get any items you want to have us discuss into Roseanne before 11:00 a.m. tomorrow. And I think that's everything. So we are adjourned for tonight. Have a good night and see you all in meetings throughout the week, but back here officially in two weeks. Good night.